We are going to draw our meeting to order. Thank you for attending, everybody. We've got a nice, nice crowd tonight. Billy, if you would like to jump in to number three, awards and recognition.
I would most certainly love to jump in.
Please do.
We have a tremendous number of students with us today, and we wanted to make sure we got to start off this meeting right with some awesome recognition. The recent Habit of Success Assembly at Garth Elementary celebrated students who exemplified the habit number one of leader in me, be proactive. One student per grade level at Garth was recognized for consistently demonstrating initiative, responsibility, and a positive attitude in their daily actions. Now, you know, we've got people not from Garth here, so what am I talking about here? The assembly was fully organized by students from the Georgetown Leadership Academy who developed the agenda, coordinated transitions, and led portions of the program. This experience provided leadership students with an authentic opportunity to apply and demonstrate leadership beyond the classroom. The assembly aligns with the overarching objective of the Georgetown Leadership Academy to create meaningful opportunities for students to exhibit leadership through speaking, organizing, planning, and encouraging others. GLA emphasizes growth in the profile of a learner competencies, including being a confident and responsible leader, an effective and engaged communicator, a respectful and accountable collaborator, and an empathetic and compassionate citizen. Students apply for this program, unique to Georgetown Middle School, and it is another example of our efforts to continually provide meaningful new opportunities for our students. Through this experience, eighth grader Camden Raglin proved his ability to lead with purpose, collaborate with his peers to achieve a shared goal, and communicate effectively. Camden researched and planned the activities with intention and worked with his classmates to facilitate a fun and meaningful assembly for students at Garth. So, we, we were expecting a large number tonight, and, and I'm sorry if we got a little bit, little bit busy and crowded with the, with the room here. But I also know we've got some students that couldn't make it because we've got a big play coming up tomorrow night at Georgetown Middle School, and I'm sorry for that. But I'm going to, at this time, I'm going to stand up in the front here, and I will call everyone's names and the ones that are in attendance. If you would come forward, and I'll present you with a Scott County Schools challenge coin, and on our Scott County Schools challenge coin, it says, what's your greatest and best. Scott County, a great place to live, learn, everyone. And we're going to start with first up, Camden Raglin.
I'm trying to.
We're going to get a picture or not?
I didn't know which way you were going.
All right. I don't believe they're with us, but maybe they still. It's Diddy Anthony. Bailey Blackwell. Divine Tantaria. Lana Cotton. Alia Custer. Andrew Devane. Kendra Hensley. Next one I noticed here, Gabe Chilman. Delaney Oldcraft. Grayson Jackson. Ayana Cassie. Emma Kendrick. Tanya Madrid-Schlesky. Leila McKinney. Alia Morgan. Pre'Shawn Nash. Next one I noticed here, Ryan Palton. Cole Rish. Alexander Robinette. Larissa Royce. Allison Santos. Liam Singleton. Last but not least, Paul Dumas Penn.
Billy, he's best tall as you.
Well, I've got, I've got one last thing to say, so we do have a wonderful, wonderful people to lead this Georgetown Leadership Academy. Mr. Pickarol was giving me grief when he talked through doing all this. Like, it's moving, it's going to matter. I'm telling you, it's going to matter who the teacher is, and he wasn't lying because once the kids did it, it was part of, they wanted to be a part of it. So, last but not least, I'd like to recognize, this is Kaya Roper. And don't think you're getting off the hook, Mr. Pickarol. So, I'm led to believe that this group has some other things planned, and I think they're leading monthly lessons. Is it at Lemon's Meal? Is that right? And, okay, so they'll continue their work at Garth. So, again, folks, what's, what's the focus? Well, to our families, I know we've got parents here. Thank you all, to all of our parents that are here. We, you know, we, we take what we do seriously, but we also know that it's not without support of parents, that our students can't be successful without you, so thank you all very much. Students, let's give your parents a round of applause. All right, that will conclude our awards and recognition. Thank you all for being here. I don't like the two are like.
All lined up.
It's your line up.
It's kind of interesting.
I noticed that a little bit ago, yeah, yeah.
What are we saying here?
Let's move around here. Let's move around.
What are we saying here?
I think this is going to be really distracting.
I'm just not going to look up.
The goofy part is they're right across from Billy. That's what I, yeah.
It does look like they're, like, on a airline flight or something like Vegas.
Okay, on a serious note. Number four, agenda approval.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number five is public comment. I do want to add this in since we just did our first little vote on this. Both Wendy is doing something with her school this evening and was not able to attend with us, so she's, she's busy at her school. And Becky's son is getting an award, and she's out of state watching him receive that award this evening, so I just want to share to you why there's only the three of us this evening, but we have a form.
Very uncommon for us.
Yes.
Very uncommon for us.
We're a form. We are good to go, so it's just going to be a little odd. I say, yeah, just a few of us. Number five, public comment, and Mike Davis, come on up.
He's even strategized to stay under his five minutes, I've been, I've been told too, ahead of time.
Gosh, I don't know why, Billy, because I think you mentioned it every time. Absolutely. Yes.
I like it.
But this is something, we, we pass out a survey to all of our members every, every month to discuss any concerns, but whenever I took over, we decided to start putting shout outs in that they could give to the great things that were going on in the school system, or their schools specifically. And so they could, you know, let us know the good things were going on. As you'll see, I think one of them actually mentions the leadership team from Georgetown Middle, which we see why now, so that's really cool. I, mainly tonight, I wanted to talk to each and every one of you about the success that us as the association have had since the beginning of the school year. We've been in every school since the start of the school year. Over the past week, we've been, we've been doing our membership blitz. It just wrapped up, and it was one of the most successful ones we've ever had. We signed up 52 new members. And that brings our total new members for this year at 118, since new or, new teacher orientation. These 118 individuals, educators, support staff, and professionals who have all made the decision to stand together for the profession, their colleagues, and their schools. Even more inspiring, we've seen an, an increase, a 50% increase in our classified staff membership from last year. That is something that had fallen off, and we put it, made it a priority to make sure that our classified staff knew that we, we cared about them, and, and it's been a nice, huge accomplishment for us to see them that want to be involved and, and know that we feel like they're just as important as anybody else. Our bus drivers, custodians, instructional aides, food service workers, and our other classified employees are the heart of our schools, and seeing more of them step up and join us speaks volumes about the pride and unity they see in our district. What made this success so special was the atmosphere in every building. Each school welcomed us with professionalism, respect, and genuine courtesy. It was clear to the people across the district believe in what we're doing, not just as an association, but as a school community that wants to move forward together, and that's what I believe. I always want to make sure, I tell all the principals, I'm here to work as a partner with you guys. That's what we want it to be. I'm not, I'm not a contentious kind of guy. I believe in if there's a problem, we need to solve it together, and, you know, every time Mr. Parker can tell you if we bring a concern, we, we don't bring a concern unless they're willing to offer a, a possible solution. That's the way I was when I was a head football coach, and that's the way I've always been. I think you need to, you know, it's easy to gripe. You know, I want people that want to think about what we can do to make things better. But I was really proud of the way that our, all of the principals, I told Mr. Parker in our meeting, every principal I spoke to was just, I mean, I, I really believe that we have the best of the best leading our school. I mean, they were, they, they, they understood why we're there. They, they treated us with the utmost respect. They, they, they were able to engage in conversations with us to understand why we want to be partners with them, and it just made a big difference, I think, in, in the overall atmosphere of, of understanding that. And I know in other places, and sometimes that may not have been necessarily the way it's always been done, but as long as I'm in charge, that's the type of way I want business done as far as that goes. And while the membership drive was led by S E C, S S E, S C E A, we recognize that the, the culture of collaboration we have, have been building with the board and Mr. Parker plays a major role in why people believe in the direction we're heading. When our staff sees progress, when they, sorry, when they see the communication improving, moral, morale rising, and the partnerships forming, they want to be a part of this. And the success is proof that Scott County educators and employers believe in the future that we're building. But we also know that there's plenty more to work to be done. There'll always be challenges, and I firmly believe as we work together on all of those, including improving compensation for our lowest paid employees, continuing to attract and, and retain highly qualified educators here, are always going to only ensure that Scott County truly remains the best place to live, learn, and work. We're ready to roll up our sleeves and continue to work with you. I, I thank you for everything you do, and, and, you know, mainly, that, that was my main goal. I wanted to tell you about the success we've had. I wanted to make you understand how I think the leaders that we've picked for our buildings have been, been the right people, and, and I think that we have people that understand that we're here to work together to make it the best that we can, and I thank you all for that from the bottom of my heart. I want, I said it again, and somebody told me about it today, and I kind of put it in here. I want us to be the model for the state, you know? I want them to understand that how collaboration and unity can truly move public education forward, and that happened in the times that we're in nowadays with all the, all the division, I'd like to see a little bit more unity. So, thank you all very much. I appreciate it, and I know a lot of our employees appreciate what we have going on together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing, Mike.
That was impressive, Mike. You had 10 seconds.
Thank you for what you said also. Well, that's one way of doing it, that's for sure.
No, in, in all seriousness.
There you go.
Well, I mean, right, the shot clock, I mean, that's a thing. That's a thing. They're going to need more of those, so, yep. Yep. No, in all seriousness, though, you know, me and Mike spoke earlier today, it, it is, it's wonderful that we're in a place where we can have, just the communication is good, and we're able to, both, both sides want, want the same thing. So, it's a good situation, good situation here in Scott County.
Number six, consent agenda, agenda items A through I. Any discussion?
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. I'll get it right yet. I know it is so awkward, yeah. Just jump in when you want to talk. Yeah. Hi, Tony. Go ahead, go ahead. Number seven, construction report. There we go.
Sunnier and drier, but cooler period, but there has been a lot of progress, and of course, I always like to start with the rendering of the school, but hey, we have a roof on, so, yay. So now they're able to get inside and, you know, do some work inside. I mean, it's not dried in necessarily, but, but that's good progress. If you look at the other end where the storm shelter is, you can see that they've got the beams up, and the joists are sitting right there, ready to put on. There's probably some on now because this was a couple of days ago. And right in the center, they're starting to build the entry to the area there, so that should go up quick. And this is just going inside and looking down the corridor. You can see the mechanical mezzanine up there as well. And I couldn't find a ladder. I was going to get up there, but all I had was, everybody uses a lift these days, and I, but anyway, I couldn't get up there, but it's just, it's, that's the bottom of the mechanical mezzanine right now. There, you can see a lot of plumbing pipe going in, so mechanical, electrical, all that type of work going on as well. It's typical shot of a classroom there underneath. And there's going out the other end and, and looking back at that classroom wing that's pretty well done, and, and look at there, there's a picture of a barn in there. How about that? You know, they almost look kind of similar there, but geothermal field. I'm bad. Just bringing back good memories. Geothermal field is pretty much complete. They were loading up the drill as they were, as I was going out of there, so all of the vertical lines are in, and now they're, they're connecting the horizontal lines. And there's the gym, looking in pretty good shape, and it's got the joist on top of it, too. They'll start the brickwork soon. You can see they're getting into some of the, the window trim work where they're just getting it so they can put the windows in to dry that area in and get the brick up. And there's inside the gymnasium, and you can see the proscenium opening for the, the platform area there. And just looking in the kitchen cafeteria, you can see they've started there. There's a lot of electrical work going on, the conduit going in. And that's the backside of the storm shelter area that I was talking about. You can see some of those joints are already going on, and those go on pretty quick, and the roof deck goes on pretty quick, so that should give them another interior space to work inside once the weather starts getting worse. And that's it for the report. I, I will mention that we've been having, I guess there's an impromptu color committee that's been put together, of course, and Ms. Holmes and Mr. Brandonberg and Mr. Parker and others in our office have gotten together several times. We've looked at different options for colors, and I think they wanted to scale it down to the point where you all would have options, so hopefully next, early next week, we'll bring in some items to set up in the board, or somewhere in the board building that you all can look at and get some comments on.
And, and really, the, if we were at full strength, we would work through that tonight, but we may go ahead after the meeting and just kind of try and figure out what nights might be available for the group. And then I'll contact Ms. Nelson and Ms. Young to see, see how they, how their availability is, but, yeah, it's, Tony, you've been coming right along. I, I had someone reach out to me the other day that I know in the construction world that's familiar with a lot of projects we've been on, and they've been on a lot of projects, I mean, across, across a lot of different districts across, across the state of Kentucky. I mean, across, across a lot of different districts across, across the state of Kentucky, maybe beyond, I'm not sure. Um, but they said, you know, one thing about this Griggs group, they're the cleanest bunch that they've ever really seen. They keep the worksite incredibly clean. So.
It's a good point because that, we've noticed that several times when we've come on the site. Good point. Good point. Any other questions?
Tony's everything though. You still feeling good about that?
Uh, yes, um, in terms, yeah, well, it's, it's a very good question, an important question. Um, and where there's a progress meeting next Tuesday morning and we always ask that question to them. And so far, since our last progress meeting, um, they've assured us that, hey, we're on that track as, we're all hoping and praying for a very good winter. That will help everything. Um, if we have a really bad winter, a really wet winter like we did last year, um, it'll be more challenging. Um, the things that we've had discussions about is if there's an area that went like the media center or something like that, that we, that we can't use, but we can lock the doors and give them access. Get that front section done and get the administration done and give them a cafeteria to go, a, a, a place to go eat. So that the school is safely and through code officials occupied. But now I'm just saying that as a worst case scenario, if you know, we don't know what the winter is going to do. Right now, we're hoping the school's finished by August and you're in there. So that's, that's our plan as of today. Yeah.
And I've been, I've really appreciated the, the tender and the tone from, from Griggs and all of their subs as, as far as just, you know.
They want it to happen.
Yeah. Yeah. They, I, I truly believe that. I truly believe that.
All right. Thank you, Tony. Appreciate it. Number eight, student achievements.
We can leave the lights on for this one, can't we? Cause you all got the same thing.
So um, today we're going to share with you the August administration of iReady. Um, and so, you know, this should be pretty short because this is really where our students are entering the uh, school year with their iReady data. And so as you all know, we really put a lot of emphasis in the spring because that's where we really see the growth. But we definitely wanted to share with you all where our starting point was for the school year. So yeah.
All right. Good evening. So one thing to remember is that iReady has relative performance descriptors. So you're going to see a dark green, which is mid or above grade level. A light green, which is early on, yellow, which means one grade level below. Light red is two grade levels below and then that dark red is three or more grade levels below. However, in the fall, it's appropriate that the majority of the students fall in that yellow area because iReady, um, they define that as they're ready for the content. So that can be a bit misleading because that is certainly different in the winter and in the spring.
So this is our reading data from uh, the last three years, well, last two years and this year then compared. And so you can see, and that's all students taking that. So 6,400 students. And you can see that we have um, from two years ago added, we added a little bit more green and we added a little bit more, or the green stayed the same this time. But we also reduced the red students down at the bottom. And you know, one of the things we talked about when we were looking at this is well, we went from 29% to 27% down at the bottom. So that's 2%. But if you think about, that's out of 6,000 students. That's a significant number of students. We've moved up into that ready for instruction level. So we are pretty pleased with that. This then is the comparison to national norms for reading. The national norms, national year to date, which is so beginning uh, data for everybody from across the nation. The Kentucky year to date, so beginning data for everybody in the state. And then you see the district total there and then broken down by K through five and six through eight. So looking at us, I know one of the main things we like to look at is that national year to date. Um, and the Kentucky one, and we fare very well compared to those. Um, one thing of note, um, on this one, especially that six through eight number where the green um, is way up there. And while you might be concerned about the, the deep red in the six through eight versus the K through five, you have to remember that that's three plus grade levels below. So really you can have very few students who even could possibly be three or more grade levels below, just because you don't have that many, they've not been in school that long. So that number is going to be a little bit different. And then moving into mathematics, we had the same thing. So the last three year administrations of this. And um, you can see again where um, this one, we didn't make the movement that we had made with reading, but you have to remember that we're in just now into a good full year of HQIR with math. And so we are looking forward to that taking place, just like it did with reading and making a difference in those changes. And then again, compared to that national data, so for our district compared to the national year to date, um, again favorable ahead of that. Um, and again favorable ahead of the um, Kentucky ones as well. And again, there you see the K through five breakdown and the six through eight breakdown in math. Again, we're really, we love to focus on that green up there on that six through eight because that is a really good looking, really good looking graph for the beginning of the year for them.
Only one of them, but when we're looking at the one grade level below, that's the sweet spot, right?
That's where they should be now.
Just in general, where everyone should be because they're, they should be one level. Right. So if we're seeing them in the green at all, it means they're advanced. They've already got it. Okay. In some ways those are scary because what are you going to do with them?
Right.
That's especially a challenge in um, middle school because iReady, that year two ends um, at eighth grade. So if they are beyond eighth grade, then we're, we're having conversations at the middle school level of what are we doing for those students to provide accelerated learning?
Yeah, that's, that's a challenge.
Good challenge.
But it's a good challenge. A challenge that would break.
So iReady does offer us a projected proficiency report. And we debated whether to give you all these slides for, for a couple of reasons. Because this only gives you a snapshot of um, from the fall and then they predict, well, this is how we think they'll do on KSA in the spring. A lot can happen between now and then. So we look at this as a baseline. We know that these are the results if students meet their typical growth. Well, we expect some of our students to meet their stretch growth and so that can look very different.
And I just also, because I've really debated on whether or not, because we are getting ready in the next month to actually provide real KSA data. Um, and so, but just so that you all can have it, um, just so that you can see it.
Well, and we're getting, we're getting, this is, this is 30 year?
Mm-hmm.
So, so we've got two years back of data to know if it's projecting correctly or not.
Yes.
And I think we have found instances where it seems a lot of pretty well and we found instances where it doesn't. So.
However, this does show us a baseline that in math, 46% of our students would be at that proficient level.
Yeah, but it gives you somewhere that if you're 46, you're going to be disappointed, but you'll be a lot more than 46.
Absolutely. And I do have it broken down into school for you. So you can review that further um, as you'd like. We also offer that same information for reading and so 47% of our students are projected to be proficient in reading. And this is grades three through eight. And then you have the breakdown by school as well.
So just like prior to uh, this year, we had focused a lot on our implementation of our reading programs with um, going with the word Gillingham and the iReady program. So this year, our iReady professional learning plan is focused in on the iReady classroom math. So we, um, in September and October, most of these have already happened. They are going in. So we have people from iReady who go in and they work with every PLC for the grade levels and the, the um, math grade levels, math teachers in those grade levels. Um, with a focus on differentiation this time. So we talked about those students that are up higher and we talked about those students that are down lower. How are we going to, you know, work with them? So that's what they are doing in those meetings in September, October. Then November and December, this is a new one for us. They are going to be doing learning walks in the classroom. So actually going in and watching teachers use the programs and giving them feedback on what they're doing well. Um, next steps for them to try to improve. And then in February and March, they'll go back to work with their PLCs again. Um, and this time working with us and with iReady, there will be some school choice in what that focus is going to be when they go back in for those meetings. And then we are also very excited to get the Kentucky Numeracy Accounts Grant, which really helped because that gave us $70,000 that is being used toward those HQIR materials and professional learning. So the ability for them to go in and work with those, all those students or the teachers rather, um, the, that has really made a big difference in us being able to afford the support that those teachers need in there and, and the materials.
I need to give a shout out to Wendy. He wrote that grant and got us approved. So.
Nice job. That's awesome. Thank you.
Paul reviewed it and helped. Um, so at the middle school, we do have illustrative mathematics this year. And so we have a professional learning plan for that as well. Teachers received training in the program in August and then administrators and lead teachers had an additional training in September. Um, along with that, we have a Scott County Schools, we have coaching support within the secondary level that goes in. Um, Billy Travis is a retired teacher who goes into our secondary schools and she, she does it all. She is in PLCs. She helps them plan. She, you know, helps them figure out the HQIR and just is a great support. Um, in addition, we've also teamed with Kids First Coaching. So they provide two coaches and these two coaches are highly trained in illustrative mathematics. And so it's not a one and done professional learning. They're actually going into all of our middle and high schools five to eight times this year and it's job embedded professional learning. So um, when they are getting into that high quality instructional resource and are finding like, well, what do I do now? Or how does this work? The coach is there often to kind of help work them through the problems of that. Um, and then we also have an IM cohort for our secondary math teachers as well. We also have uh, 28 teachers, elementary school teachers who applied for the Kentucky Numeracy Accounts KCM Teacher Academy and were accepted. So this is quite a rigorous program. It's a two-year commitment. There are asynchronous and synchronous components to this. So they are doing work throughout this course. But they are learning best practice mathematics instruction. So not only, it's not solely focused on the HQIR, but it's working with the HQIR with best practice. We have two administrators who are also a part of this program. So they're learning how to um, take the learning back that their teachers are receiving and helping to lead that work in their building. And then we have a district office representative as well that is working through that.
Which is Wendy.
Yeah. I do love KCM. Yes, I do. That's okay. That's, that's true. That's true. And so we also have a KCM cohort. So um, we are lucky to have collaboration with the Kentucky Center for Mathematics. People coming in to work with the cohort about effective math instruction in small group setting. That's an area where we see there is a need. So how to use manipulatives with iReady? How to use the KCM resources that they have. And they don't always have the time to do this. So we feel very lucky that they were able to come in with us. Um, and it's our hope that these teachers in this cohort were lovin' enough that they'll apply for the next round of that Kentucky Teacher Academy. So fingers crossed about that. And so that is the end of our report. If you have any questions?
Would, would you entertain me to do something different?
What? I, I, that scares me, but go ahead. What are you thinking?
So.
How am I giving permission first?
Well, so I'm going to switch gears just a little bit, still thinking along the lines of what we're providing in our schools. Um, so I'm going to talk about it a little bit in, in my student, in my superintendent report. But you know, yesterday we had um, our leader and me leadership day here in the district, first time ever hosted. And um, probably the best compliment I heard, I heard tonight from Ms. Ratliff or, or or member Ratliff, whatever I'm supposed to call Eleanor. She, and she said, uh, well, I'll let you tell it. What, what was it you told me about? It's the first time in 20 years?
I heard ago. Yesterday was the first day that I, I just liked to back in the classroom or I would take one. They did have lunch from another county and very nice. But yeah, it, it was wonderful. I mean, I'm very eighty. But it was, oh, it was wonderful. All, well, they are, they are wonderful.
And, and that led into what I was wanting to do. I wanted to present Paul for all.
It was, and I will say, you talk about the two, but there were 10 times, probably 30 times. So it was, yeah, it was a great thing.
It was wonderful.
Thank you. Very nice.
I think I'm just going to let you guys conduct. I'm not even, I don't have to read anything. Just go ahead. Who's next? Let's go. Get that train going.
I did that to Dr. Hub once and I regretted it instantaneously. So I will not do that. So good evening, everyone. I just want to thank the calendar committee for coming together. We've got folks from uh, the, our staff, uh, classified, certified administrators, parents, and then also folks in the community as well that participated in this. Uh, I also do want to appreciate Tony, uh, Griggs and Greg for keeping our pace on Oxford so that we are on trajectory to open up on time because that will certainly affect the calendar. So. All right. Next slide. Do I have to say that or I push the button? Oh, okay. So, yeah. All right. Give, give me power. All right. That's excellent. Sorry, in the military, next slide is a common statement and you just.
Yeah, because somebody that.
It's on the bingo board. Next slide. So this is the agenda that we'll be working through. Just uh, essentially we'll go through the community survey data and then we'll look at the courses of action. Uh, the committee decided to push three forward to you. Uh, there is a fourth one in your deck that we threw away and that's uh, option D. We'll talk about that. And then we've got a recommendation as well. Um, so with regard to the survey data, executive summary of the majority responses, just to give you a framework of the, the points that stuck out the most. Everybody prefers to start earlier to mid-August. That's pretty traditional fall break. Again, a full week. People want that. We did offer them several options to consider other ways to look at breaks during the fall. And um, the traditional three-day Thanksgiving break was preferred over the uh, one week. I know Billy was heartbroken about that.
I'll just keep trying.
And, and, and I'm sure that it will keep getting 15% of the vote.
I'd rather, I'd rather no fall break and a full week for Thanksgiving.
And, and Mike Davis would join you on that, Billy. And then uh, winter, winter break, um, two full weeks, the way it falls, that's optimal anyway, because it really does fall for two full weeks. Uh, spring break, uh, the full week, that's the most popular, uh, particular break as far as voting goes. And people just want to be done in May. And we did actually ask about Fayette County Public Schools and people really just don't care. So, um, so.
Well, and, and I'll speak to that one because I do know that um, I, I believe it might've been Ms. Nelson that specifically uh, brought that to the surface because she had had some people talk to her about um, how that might impact them, but it sounds like that was.
Well, they liked it as much as a full week of Thanksgiving break. Well, they liked it as much as a full week of Thanksgiving break. So about 15%. So. Calendar Option A is what we went with and you'll see that here in just a few minutes. So overall participant breakdown, you can see that parent guardians are the overwhelming respondents. We did reach out to them through a lot of diverse means. We emailed everybody through their Infinite Campus data that they provide, which includes email information. We also reached out through Renee using our online social media capability as well. We received about 2,700 respondents, which is a little bit less than last year, but less than 100 difference. I think we'll see those numbers pretty consistently until we get more students. The breakdowns, you can see how that breakdown looks with regard to total numbers. Overwhelmingly, we did take the board's consideration into the questioning and we broke down certified staff and classified staff. And you can see that certified staff tend to be a little bit more engaged in responding by numbers. But that does provide some interesting insights. And if you have questions about how any particular subgroup feels, we can go back and extract that at any time. All right, with regard to the first day of school, overwhelmingly, people want to start in August. I did actually, or we did ask about going as late as September in light of the possibility of problems. If weather sets in with Oxford, we just wanted to see what people thought about late August and early September, just to see. You can see the breakdown overwhelmingly, people prefer August and the early to mid-August timeframe. And that matches our traditional calendar start, which would be the August 12th would be the most common date for us to begin. Then you've got the fall and Thanksgiving breaks. We broke the questioning down to see if, if they had to choose, because everything's a trade-off, what would they prefer? And so the question was structured in such a way that they would choose different options. And so with regard overwhelmingly, fall break, people want it for one week as opposed to a one-week Thanksgiving break or two, or a four-day weekend for fall break. We asked about those. And then 13% did actually come in and respond that they would prefer to go shorter breaks if they could get out sooner in May. With regard to winter break, everybody wants two weeks. That's a pretty popular event. There was about 15%, which matches Billy with the Thanksgiving break one week. And that said that they would go as late as the 23rd. We did look at Toyota and their work calendar and all of our calendars would support their off times. And so they, they actually do wait for our calendar to come out. They like to get that data. But there'd be no conflict with any of the courses of action that we have available. With regard to spring break, this is the most popular break, 84.7%. You can see how that broke down. There was a small contingent that favored the two to three-day spring break as a way to get out sooner. And then end of year, everybody just wants out by May, 89.7%. There are some that will respond, really don't care, but that's a very small number. And about 10% would accept June if they got more breaks throughout the year. With regard to the Fayette County Public School alignment, so about 15% it preferred some form of caring about Fayette County's calendar and schedule. We did look at that and took that into consideration. And there's, you can see, we've got the breaks actually built into the question that was made available to the community. And you can see that their fall break next year actually will fall one week before the days that we looked at. And then their spring break will match ours.
Is it fair to say, Brent, that this is a situation where if you have a, two educators in your household, there's just always going to be winners and losers if you're in opposite districts because?
It's very true.
Because we've got people I know that have Franklin and Harrison and we can't line with everybody.
And we did have an open-ended question that looked at anything that people wanted to bring up. And we did have people that brought up, what about Harrison? What about Woodford? What about? Because they're in those mixed family situations where they've got workers in each community. So that is a conflict that does affect folks. And there were about 300 total people that responded in very diverse ways. But of those, approximately 100 actually cared about other districts. So that just gives you a framework to think about out of the 2,700 respondents. We did, in those open-ended themes, there were three themes that popped out. One was the later fall break. People really wanted the first full week of fall break or possibly the second full week of October rather to be the fall break window. So people made comments with regard to that. And there seemed to be some preferencing within the committee as well with regard to getting that first full week just because of the start timeframe and how that falls with the school calendar. Alignment to other districts, like I said, about 100 favored considering Franklin, Woodford, Harrison, Bourbon, and Jasmine. And then there was, there were staff that did care about when teacher workdays were aligned. They wanted to match those up with the various breaks. Working with the offices student learning, we aligned the breaks in accordance with best practice of using those to actually enable best planning.
One, one trade-off I have found from districts that have, that have went further towards aligning them with breaks is sometimes then they result in higher absenteeism. Because people just treat it as a.
Absolutely. And absenteeism is a significant problem anyway, aligning your breaks, those last days, that's a problem traditionally. The calendar consistency, every one of the calendars will have four holidays in accordance with law. We have three collaboration days built in and then professional development days on the front end where we do events like PD Palooza. The, we do have two election days that will occupy space on our calendar next year. November 3rd is a collaboration day on all of our calendars and then May 18th is a non-student day. A non-student, non-staff day on all of our calendars as well because they're going to require the schools for that. And we did work with our community, the county clerk, to make sure that was all straight. With regard to the calendars, Draft A, Calendar A is the one that was recommended overwhelmingly by the board. I will say that, that Ms. Nelson and a couple of other board members or committee members, they did favor another calendar and we'll talk about that. They favored a later start because they were concerned about the Oxford timeline. One of the things I just wanted to make the board aware of is that we can adjust that at any time. That's not a problem. So you'll see that the calendar we recommended is more traditional in nature. Starts in accordance with the traditional August 12th, August 13th window is about where we usually are. So the middle of that, that week. And we've got a full week of fall break, October 5th through 9th. You got two full weeks for winter break. The first week, full week of spring break is, or April is spring break. And then last day for students, they'll be out on the 19th unless we have days that delay. And then all of our calendars built in weather days in accordance with law. All right, the other calendars, we did look at two other calendars, actually, we considered three other calendars. But we did look at one that we called weekends. I built two four-day weekends working with the committee just to give some divergence. Those are spaced out in February and March because of those are long timeframes. That calendar was not recommended. And that one was the least preferred. No one supported that. If you go to the long weekend, so if you look at February and March, what I did is I took the collaborative day or as I recommended different options with the committee. We, we looked at adding a non-student, non-staff day in conjunction with the collaborative day. So it breaks up that timeframe. Everybody knows that February, March is pretty difficult from a teaching standpoint. But that did not really garner a lot of support. I just tried to give options to the committee to consider. And so that did not because they saw it as the staff is still going to have to come in for the collaborative day. And overwhelmingly, people moved, did not favor it. The, the late start, this was supported by Ms. Nelson and also another committee member as well. And the reason that drove this was largely centered on Oxford and concerns about that. And again, if we have a delay, it's not a problem. The board can consider another calendar in accordance with the recommendation of the superintendent. And we did look at a four-day fall break. The committee did not want to pursue this. This also, just in light of looking at the community feedback. And you can see that the, the fall break there would have fallen just on a four-day weekend that we created in October. The overall recommendation was Calendar A. It matches our traditional calendar. It honors all the survey endorsed breaks. And it had the most votes within the community. We recognize that Oxford may push anything back. We'll just continue to monitor that with our team. And subject to any questions that you have, you will need to select one of these options at the next board meeting. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Number 10, approve Section 7 funding as submitted.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? No.
You don't want to discuss it?
Do you want to discuss?
I don't. Do you?
Okay, sorry.
So one, one thing, in all seriousness, I literally, I missed it in discussion with you all ahead of this about it. I, I don't know, I don't know that I really brought out the 1/6 teacher for ECS teaching and learning to the surface. But again, that's, we've started down that path. We've found success with enrollment numbers. Anyway, it was just something, I'm really the 1/6 teaching and learning that we did. Okay, all right, nevermind. You're looking at me like I need to just be quiet, so I'll just be quiet.
No, I really wasn't thinking that.
No, I think I'm on board.
Yeah, it's what we did, right. Again, we did that in spite of taking, you know, needing a teacher or half of a teacher to at both of the schools. It's, it's worked out pretty well. We, we talked about it actually with Mike Davis a little bit earlier. So that's what got me thinking about it.
All right, good discussion. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, approve memorandum of understanding between Scott County Board of Education and Western Kentucky University. Authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate recommended provisions.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, approve emergency certifications as listed, 12A and 12B.
So move.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 13, approve KETTS offer of assistance for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Move.
Second. Any discussions? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Obviously not. Motion carries. Number 14, approve committed funds as of October 23rd, 2025.
So move.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, approve 2026 capital funds request.
Move.
Not good. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, financial statement.
I have in your package the summary of cash activity for September 2025. Our beginning balance was 66.1 million. We have received the 6.2 million. We have expenses of 10.2 million. And our ending balance was 61,666,603.31 with 7.2 million of that being construction funds, leaving our ending cash balance at 54,426,671.
Thank you. Number 17, approve current bills.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, approve surplus items as submitted.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, superintendent reports.
So under strategic leadership, we have been spending a lot of time on Oxford redistricting timeline and the proposed zone, proposed zone for that school. That will be something that I would imagine in the next couple of weeks, we'll probably be talking about that timeline, what that looks like so that you all have awareness around it and, and get an opportunity to understand kind of the thoughts that have gone into some of these decisions. And also to see the, see some of the presentations that we've got ready to go for that one. JROTC planning, we, we, I think I talked about it a little bit before, but we are, and again, you all on that Section 7 piece approved. .5 JROTC teacher at both schools, which gives us 1.0 across the district, which we will use for the JROTC program. And again, we, we do this at this time of year so that we can make sure our schools have time to put that on the students, students' planning for schedule for next year because it's something that they're already looking at. I already talked about Leader in Me Leadership Day. Congratulations on the bingo board, wherever you got on there, Paul, for that. So good for you. KSA, so man, we'll, we'll be talking soon, we'll be talking soon about our KSA results. So we've been, we've been talking as much as we're allowed to talk about that so far.
When?
The 19th, is that right? November 19th is the public release, so.
But you all, have you seen them? You're working on them. Yeah. Making sure. Yeah, worrying every back of death, trying to get all the.
Any comment?
It's awful. Well, yeah, they're just cleaning up, but that's, that's always hard, I know.
Cultural leadership, I along with DT Wells served lunch at Stampin' Ground Elementary. We've done this now for three or four years and what we, we, we keep expecting that we won't be asked back. But what we found is the reason we keep getting asked back is because they have a new manager every year. That was the pattern. That's right. They don't know because once they know, they don't want any part of it. But anyway, we had a good time and kids ate, so. We had, we did have Ann Bevins. Many know Ann Bevins is local historian, writer. You know, if there's a historical marker in town, there's more than a coin flip's chance that she's the one who, who was a part of that. She had a book signing event at Scott County High School, donated some books to our schools, to Central Office. And just very, I don't know, just a blessing. I, I would hope that every community has someone like her. I don't know that they do, but you know, she just, it's one of those things where I think that there are people, I think like myself, that appreciate her now, but I think that it will be one of those things that the appreciation for her will grow beyond her lifetime. Because, I mean, the detail, just the detail in, 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 in those books is, is just, it's just tremendous. And talk about somebody who just has chased her passion her entire life. Just, it was a great event and thank you to Scott County High School for hosting. And we had students from Phoenix that attended and we had Great Crossing represented by Ms. Lesby. It was, it was a really good event. It was, we weren't sure if it, how big to make it, how small to make it. I feel like we just, we hit the sweet spot and it was baby bear just right. So, anyway. Wally Messer, we talked about him. We've, we've recognized him here when he was a finalist for the Harbor Freight Tools and Schools. But he in fact ended up being one of the, was it the final 15? Is that right? Final 15 winners and won $50,000, portion for himself, portion for the school. Big deal. And, you know, kudos to Joy Lesby. She knows how to throw a party. I mean, it was huge. The whole auditorium packed, literal, literally a red carpet rolled out. Former students, I talked to five different students that took off work to come to, to have an opportunity to be there to speak. It was, yeah, it was super, super powerful, super powerful. And he's certainly making a difference in our district.
It was.
Yeah.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah. Site visits have begun. I've completed my first one at Scott County High School yesterday and we will continue down that path the rest of the fall and make sure to get those knocked out. And professional growth plans for principals, we've started that ball rolling for the year there and got those meetings completed. We had, as Tony discussed, we've had some preliminary Oxford color meetings to get it to a point where you all have some, some meaningful choices to make on, on several of these items. And I'm very curious to see, in particular, how much we love orange around here. So we'll see. It'll be, it'll be interesting. That's right.
I like more of an Auburn. A little more Auburner, Miami orange, not so much Kentucky.
The Kentucky Center for School Safety, we are, we are, we're blessed with that, with that group. They have a pretty strong partnership with Scott County Schools. They host their annual conference at Great Crossing High School every year. It's just, again, we're conveniently located. And one of the things that they offer to the state, all schools. to the state, um, all schools, is, um, they have trainings, and sometimes some of those trainings are, are free of cost. And the one that I try to attend every year is there's this guy, his, his moniker is kind of tall cop says stop, um, but he does a drug trends webinar every year. Um, and it's something that I try really hard to not miss. I mean, this, this year's fell during fall break, and I, I was there for the whole thing. Um, we had several SROs that were there for it. Uh, we had several, um, several administrators that also participated as well, um, because we had some conversations about it at the Friday football game, fall, immediately following. But, um, you know, that, that's just one of those things that, um, being a part, I never thought about having nurses attend that. And me and DT have had some conversations, and DT's had some great ideas about who we could include in some of these things moving forward and, and why we might and, and try to include some people. Again, it's just, it's just great information, and it changes so fast. It's a world that changes so fast. Things that he was talking about that were going to be trends that we hadn't seen at the time last year are now trends that we are seeing now. So he gave us tips and, and, and let us know about some things that, that might be on the horizon. And again, the nurse piece, the way the nurse piece fits in is as they're describing what's coming, some of the, um, you know, some of the ways that it impacts students or just people who might have taken too much or whatever, um, it's just been good conversation around, here's some, some things that you could look at that, that, oh, if it's this, it might be connected to this or, 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 or this other drug, so...
Is that information getting disseminated down to the teachers? Because they're the ones in the classroom.
Yeah, so as part of PD Palooza, that was something that, um, we have included because we felt the same way.
Yeah, particularly at the middle of high school level.
Yes, yes. So, um, so yes, it's something that we've had sessions, we had, how many sessions do we have this year?
Um, from?
Okay.
Yeah. I thought, I remember doing similar when I was teaching high school. Yeah. I remember being in the classroom and them teaching us that, um, meth, when meth was becoming a thing, the concern about the, the way it came out of your system, it smells like cat urine. And I didn't know that, but then they taught us that as teachers, and it's a real smell.
Changes the way you, yeah, might have thought about a situation. That's right.
It makes you, it makes you rethink whether are they just coming from a home that's unkempt or is it that they're doing?
And, and, you know, and again, to some degree, this is kind of kudos to K, uh, the Kentucky Center for School Safety for making sure that they're providing us these opportunities. Because again, they're, they're, they're doing it, but, uh, the way the webinar's set up, there's no limit, you know, so...
Yeah, that's great.
It, it can be whoever. So that's something that we look to try and take better advantage of and leverage because again, it's available to us. Uh, the Kentucky School Plant Manager Association, which has its roots deep in Scott County as, uh, you know, we were a part of getting that association built a bajillion years ago. Um, they had their recent conference. We send a, a large contingent of our custodial and maintenance, um, staff there every year. Uh, I had an opportunity to attend part of one of the days. I had some other things that kept me from, um, being there two full days, but it's always a great conference and, and they always have, uh, uh, they have something for everybody, uh, that might go from superintendent, um, you know, to, uh, other district staff, and then also again for your maintenance facility folks and custodial. Collaborative leadership, mayor school visits, I went with Mayor Jenkins, and, um, something that he, um, is passionate about doing is, is visiting all of our schools. And, um, most years, it's just, we just kind of turn him loose and let him run. Um, this year, I just, I, I thought it'd be nice, get a chance to, to have some conversation with him outside of the meetings that we often attend together, that we have to. Um, and we just have had some, some travel time together, and it has just been, the, the way the kids respond to him has just been amazing to me. It's like, I mean, it's like, you know, I don't know, like the president or LeBron or something. I mean, they're just, you know, just, it's a big deal. And it's, it's been really neat too, to see the difference and, and how, um, every school's kind of, um, you know, made sure to kind of involve him as, as he, as he was a part of, uh, part of their school for a little bit. Yeah, it's, it's really, really cool. Then also the kindergarten first grade retention plan, um, you know, kudos to, um, to Stephanie and her team, and Wendy in particular, for all of the work that they're putting into that. Again, this is one, um, you know, this is one where, this year in particular, we saw a lot of things that came from legislation that on the surface don't seem like they're that complicated, that have commanded a lot of time and hours from, from our folks, but kudos to our team because I think the more we've talked about it, the better I feel about it. And I think we're going to have a plan that will meet the intent of the legislators, um, but also not create a, a tremendous burden for our schools and for our families. Um, and then last, uh, had an opportunity to speak on behalf of the Kentucky Association of School Superintendents as an officer, uh, did that here this past month or so, um, and then attended the KEDC Legislative Breakfast. Representative Gossel, which is one of our representatives, was, attended that breakfast, and we had a opportunity to discuss some things after, after the breakfast as well. They did a really good job hosting that, KEDC did. And then, um, last but not least, presented to the Kentucky Association of School Superintendent, aspiring superintendents on being superintendent as a personnel leader, and that was, I had a, a ball doing that. That was fun. And, uh, there you go. That concludes my report. Sorry, a little wordy.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Eleanor, board comments, we'll start with you.
I just, again, thank you for yesterday. So meaningful. I heard that throughout the whole, and I like the idea of having student representative. I just thought that was very meaningful. Anyway, thank you again.
Susan?
Good thanks. Lockup.
Well, um, I want to say thank you. I got to visit, um, Phoenix, um, I think last week or so, and spent a couple hours over there and just loved to see what the growth is and some changes that have taken place. Um, got to sit with Gina, which is always very fascinating. She amazes me, and, uh, I greatly appreciate it. And then kudos, same thing yesterday. Paul, great, great job yesterday, and everybody who assisted you. That was, that was a very good program. Thank you so much.
I, I, and I had an opportunity to go to Scott County High School, and Courtney Keller, are you still in here?
In the back.
Yes, and Courtney Keller, I know she, she, I mean, I know it's a team effort, but I know you headed up a lot of what was going on over there, and it was great. It was really great stuff. Really appreciated it.
I got to go to Royal, uh, Royal Springs yesterday and was the brunt of a funny little joke that I still don't know where. With the middle school? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we were doing a walkthrough. I won't share it with you, but it was really kind of funny because I just walked right into it. It was really kind of funny. I had to laugh about it for the rest of the day. So, but I love it. It's a, it's a great school. I just can't believe the age of that school and what great condition it is in. You just, it just, Deborah, I think, yeah, you and I at one point were talking about